I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. Well, please. Mayor Porten Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Senator Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Durham? Here. We have no public comment this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of meeting minutes from the August seventh, twenty twenty four, Purple Creek City Council regular meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes. On the second.
Vote please. Councilwoman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Senator Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Porten Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Durham?
Yes.
All right, moving on to report, City Administrator Frank Salvastell.
Just not a good one, Mayor. Thank you. Courtney Cutler, Commissioner of the Police Department, has given us five years of full-time service.
Standing.
On DC, I think.
All right, moving on to Finance Director Mooney Edwards.
Very long in the last days this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Agenda item A, first reading to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero seven to amend section ten dash eleven dash ten of the municipal code. Chief, right?
Reading, Mayor, Council. I would like to state that we have some red and amendment related to check the two, section of ten, eleven, and ten of the municipal code to include prohibition of camping in public places. This was originally in the municipal code, and when we were doing the revisions, the point is that at that time, the suggestion that we remove that, the US Supreme Court has surely made a rule and overturned that, so we've asked that it be put back into our code.
All right, any questions? Remember, in subsection D?
We're sorry.
To very, 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 that rich, tough thing.
So.
Too deep. I mean, you can't think of. Exhibit it.
Right. And. You.
Do you?
Except for, yes.
Okay, so what defines a resident? Does an out-of-state property owner qualify as a resident?
That is an unapproved law, unapproved property.
So.
But it's not only do I, it has to be.
It's an out-of-town owner.
An out-of-town owner that has a house, there's a residence there, yes, that would be a sufficient.
So that would fit.
In that. Yes, under, under. Yes.
Okay, and it is just fourteen days, correct?
For that, yes.
I'm just going to sleep.
Okay.
What if I fall asleep on a city park bench down at the park? Because I've done that.
Which was very interesting.
It says not sleeping in the park. I have done that.
So the park is, it has, it was key. Park is a public place, and park also prohibits people being there from down the ducts, right? So that's a separate. If, if that, the guy that was there, we were having a problem with wild mag. If it had been in the park, we could enforce it. Can't be your habit of the holidays. It's prohibitive. But on the street, it wasn't anything. We had it on the street. So there's more help us to that.
Seventeen, fourteen days, is that fourteen days consistently, or is that the consecutive?
That was, that's fourteen days at a time.
At a time, so what is it, fourteen days and that person leaves and comes back?
There was no, we didn't find a way. We, we haven't identified anything that's going. So you're here for fourteen days. You leave for a week. We haven't defined that, so.
The rough.
Paying, paying the apartment, so by the post office.
I was just gonna ask you.
He came in. What, what, you, you can start fourteen days, has permission from the property owner. Then he goes, well, it might take a little longer than that. Well, fourteen days is our limit. You have to leave on that, so I, to restart, to restart for thirteen days right now, or if you're going back. There's nothing else that's relevant. If he goes down and leaves and I said I told him to come back. Let's have a break, that would start.
Yeah. I have a question about, about item number five. They say a recreational vehicle can share a vehicle must have a current state issued registration. What is that?
License plate.
Oh, it's correct, oh, I'm sorry. I was saying, I couldn't get my side, I had to stick around, you know, but it just.
Yeah, no, it has, it has, it has a specific code, yes. Current registration, right.
Oh, my one question on, what is the frequency with which you are seeing these issues that are definitely outlined?
Um, right now, it's not too frequent. We have, everybody's aware of the some, some outlining areas that have several people camping or living there. And I think when the pressure is putting them down, I think they will be moving or migrating down. What they will do, I don't know. We have another camper in South Towne, by the Way, St. Art Plant. Part of the street. So we have those about. There's enough room to get emergency vehicles by if they need to get to a wildfire or something down there, so we really don't have anything. So you have to move it. So that's, it's currently registered, so, you know, it has to be operable, tires up. The lights are going out. This will help that, but.
So I think, so if the process reading and reporting was, um, on-street storage of RVs to even from me covers that.
I'm sorry, what?
On-street storage. If it's.
No.
If it's, if it's, if it was licensed.
Well, boy, they, it, it has to be licensed, you know, in property. Because that's, you know, people have a young trailer, and it's not a, where it's got two flat tires and stacked for a scrap boy. We can't move it, so this will be, this will be a little bit authority of the previous that will be that. This, this is a lot, uh, a lot on the street, it's parked legally, they're on the west, you know. Um, yeah, just rest of the year.
No, who does that, down, you know, comfort, isn't?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the lawyer.
Yeah, it's right down the road, right?
I mean, it's, it's registered, it's legally parked on the street.
She doesn't bother me.
I just don't hear you anything like that.
Just for, there's not, ones that are staying.
It's, it's.
RV or trailer?
RV or trailer?
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, can I get a motion, please? On, 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 twenty, twenty three, dash zero seven, sorry. Vote please. Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. All right, agenda item B, consider approval to allocate forty-two thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars to increase the resources on the dispatch consoles. Chief?
Mayor, please. So, uh, so we live in our console, that's right, which was from uh, the inquiry goes to the state eight hundred system. Uh, we have full consoles that are dispatch, so, um, those consoles for, uh, the radio, the technical term is resource. So each resource on our radio has to be a li, has to have a license, so it's a licensed resource. Also, another is a resource, I'm gonna say channel. So we try to select a channel on the radio to talk, so that's what dispatch would do. They'll talk to fires, they'll talk to EMS, they'll talk to us, that's three resources. So with all the other outside, outline agencies and other groups and task groups that we have, we were loaded on our first purchase at thirty, that was the coming group of thirty. And we thought at the time, man, thirty is great, we're maxed, uh, good. Uh, the county emergency manager and deputy emergency manager started working on a backup plan in case the state radio system fails. That plan would include adding three additional repeater channels, so we could reach ten-foot badger or go tail down the wood. Um, to do that, we'd have to add thirty more resources to our radio, because they just come in a block of thirty. So by doing that, the county's adding, I think, thirty to theirs, because they don't have room. Um, we don't have room, the county was going to pay for this, it's also between county and city. Um, county backed out, says we're just gonna take care of the county. So that's why I'm here asking for our share of this. I've got a commitment from the past attorney, number one, that once payment is made, they'll reimburse the the city for that cost, so I've talked to Finance Director Edwards. Um, I've got honey in the dispatch old salary line item, I can transfer that to the motorola service grid line. Make that payment. Um, once we show nine of my perfect payment, it will be reimbursed. Um, those used to want to expand our top groups in the city, to have public works at their own top group. We've got room now to do that, so this, I mean, this is a good thing, it's not that costly, I said.
Okay.
Yeah, this isn't, we're room, it's just. It's probably, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was a subtle, very, thanks, you know, it was, it was not being an electrician. That's right, I don't need to.
So, so, what is my concern then?
So, so, at, we have annual service.
We do.
That's fine, it's all right, and so what that does is that if something goes wrong, it's not a warranty, but we'll be a little bit straight if they come up to fix something. Uh, and that's roughly twenty-two thousand a year, that's what we pay. Uh, we got fortunate, our first year was covered. And I talked to them, and they didn't pay for the second, I would say no one to go to. So they approved it here too, so we've only got three years. That we have. I think we're two more years left this year, and this project should be coming up in August, so.
Oh, wow, that's nice.
Yeah, let me reset, no.
Well, once you provide that proof of payment, tell, so, um, do you know what the turn time is on the reimbursement?
It should not be too long, they haven't, so it's, uh, I don't expect it to be, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to look to their board for approval, they've got the money in the budget, so I think it's just assumed whenever they, whatever they, they're, so.
I don't see any, any. Especially if you can add, you know, if you said public works, or they're not on the cell phone, trying to talk to you guys.
Yeah, trying to get.
What it's.
All right, it's. Good, for us for the future.
Well, can I get a motion, please?
Our motion, we have to allocate forty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars to increase the resources on dispatch causes.
All second, vote please. Councilman Shaw?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Porten Brown?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
You're good.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item C, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty four dash eighteen, awarding a grant from the Historic Preservation Grant Funds to named resident of the city of Purple Creek, Mariah.
Hello, good evening, um, back again with a, um, another residential, um, grant, um, Florida twenty-four HP grants. Um, you'll see, they recognized this house on, because last time, uh, HB Commission, um, voted to, um, table this decision, we'll get over that slide, um. This is seventy-nine load, um, I talked a little bit about it last time, I think. But, um, this is all very historic. However, it's one of the oldest homes in Purple Creek, um, survived, um, those fires, um, this would have been very similar to a lot of, like, lower-end, um, housing, um, that sort of decadent Victorian style that we know as Purple Creek was really only the wealthy individuals. This would have been more standard, like, a middle-class family, um, this is over in, um, the, um, old section of town, um. And last time we voted to table it, um, because, um, the proper materials have not been submitted for review, um, we have, um, drawn a, uh, new grade, um, for appropriate materials, so I'm recommending we move forward with it. Um, excuse the, um, the recommended award is not the one that's on the slide, it's the one that's in your packet, it's, uh, recommended award is nine thousand nine hundred and sixty. Um, we'll go to the next slide, um, so the issue we had here before was that, um, we only wanted to restore it to a log cabin look that actually wouldn't have been, um, historically accurate, um, it is wood frame, vernacular wood frame, which would have had siding similar to what you see in the right hand picture, um, however, because it doesn't have the pitch roof, it wouldn't have had the scales on it, it would just had the, um, straight siding, so. And then on the left is just a picture of one of, um, the homes in our historic book, um, which is what this home likely would have looked like, again, but the one on the left has been modified with asphalt shingles, um. So kind of a combination of these two looks is what this house will hopefully be. So you wanna go next slide, um, we've heard a lot about, um, the color selection of the home, um, a couple of resources, um, some, uh, Victorian colors, um, and then as well as the actual, um, reveal size on the siding makes a difference, um, so the owner and I have talked about reviewing this, um, in detail, and we are actually going to go with the green, that is in, um, the top floor. Um, and a wood lap siding that looks very similar to the finish of this one, um, with a white trim. Is there another sign, anyone, okay, cool, um, so the bid, um, came in at just around twenty-two thousand dollars, that was with labor. Um, since then, um, the husband hasn't agreed to do the work, and so we're actually going to add a reward for materials, as well as a dumpster to haul away, um, the earth siding, um, and then, um, an allowance for, um, uh, any extra materials or, so.
So the new siding will prove much looks like with the siding some house now?
Yes and no, um, if you wanna go back to that really quick.
The old siding that's on the house now is final.
It will, it probably won't have those, like, the, um, trim on the outside, it'll just get vanished, uh, but you will have to look up, and then, uh, the reveal will actually be smaller, which again will make it seem a little more historic, and then that kind of shiny element you get from the vinyl will also hopefully go away, again, hopefully it appears as wood, since it is wood versus this vinyl.
So the color scheme are basically just trying to be the reverse.
Um.
That was, yeah.
The green in the top uh, probably how it looks at the right hand corner is kind of cut off. It also poses green to what um she's left in. And so that house will be green and the trend will be kind of a green color.
Any questions? All right, can I get a motion please?
I'd motion that we approved the resolution, what is it? Twenty twenty four dash eighteen, awarding a grant. It was historic preservation.
Go please.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Agenda item D, consider approval of a professional services agreement with Leadline Project Management. Neil.
Hello, hi, Mayor and Council. Uh, staff is requesting a council to the contact the lead line project and then an amount of seventy four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. They are going to provide consultant services to oversee the cost plan of updating development, uh economic development, raising strategy plan. Building code updates in conjunction with staff and Kim Lee Horn. If you remember that this grant is being provided by Dora Strong Communities. It is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, seventy five thousand dollars. Other was budgeted towards consulting position and the remainder is going to be used in the building code updates.
So is this second one or are we done?
Now, this is just approval of the contract.
Start to come back to y'all. Uh, we recommended a ward, you know, lead line and Tim Lee Horn, and then you approved him. So we did contracts. The contracts are coming back to you. We had a couple of issues with the next one. So we'll talk about that.
This one says they wrote it entered on eighth of August.
That's when it was signed and notarized by lead one, but we can revise that.
Any questions?
My comment is I would make a motion. We approve professional services agreement.
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Right, agenda item E, consider approval of a professional services agreement with Kimberly Borwell Associates.
South is also requesting approval of the professional services agreement with Kimberly Borwell Associates. An amount of two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. Um, it's the funding part of the dollar hundred thousand dollar grant and with the match for full house resorts. Uh, the remaining uh funds from the strong communities grant thirty five thousand. One is here and he'd like to address counsel. I do have one more thing that I know that the city attorney has been in negotiations with Kim Lee Horn's legal counsel to revise a few sections of our standard contract. And I believe Elisa is prepared to speak to that if they'd like to.
Yeah, um, so it's pretty much our standard um professional services agreement. Aaron worked with Kim Lee Horn to negotiate. Um, but there were a few changes. If you look in section seventeen two, sixteen, um there's just some additional um protections in there for the city's use of Kim Lee Horn's deliverables. Um, it is, so I'm looking at it. Yeah. So section two C, you're making that week.
I don't believe that they have that most recent updated contract. Tim did not have that in his files.
Oh.
So the one that Blake did bring with him today, the one today actually he signed.
Okay, um, yeah, so I'll just find and explain the changes. So, um, yeah, so in section two C, um, it will be under reports, data and work product. Um, they're just, it's not shown in the packet, but the changes that we did make uh were just to add a few additional protections. Um, for when the city uses Kim Lee Horns, just so that they're not liable um for our, the city's use of their deliverables. And then other section, we just had some minor changes um in the indemnification section. Um, it just uh we don't indemnify them for negligent reckless or intentionally wrongful acts. It's very standard language. Um. But so that Aaron and Kim Lee Horn already negotiated that. And then the last change, um we'll just, oh, there's two changes, sorry. Um, in the last section, section eleven miscellaneous, um, we just added in some force majeure language for Kim Lee Horn's request. Um, just if something out of their control happens that they will be liable for not completing time. And then the last one was, um, and I believe this was Aaron's recommendation to have A D A accessible language. And I do believe that we'll just have that in the standard contracts moving forward.
Hello, Mayor. Thanks. Uh, for the record, my name is Blake Young with Kim Lee Horn. Uh, just want to say thank you for helping us tonight. We are honored to help this community grow uh in the way that the community wants to grow. You know, we, we specialize in small area plans, small towns. And so anyway, there's a, a, you know, philosophy that we have and we will be contract with small towns. We want to make sure that we're reflecting not only the adults, but even for the growth of this, of this state and um, and its community and its members. And we also reflect the, the community themselves and the residents. And so we will uh, we'll try our best to engage with the public um throughout this entire process and actually say, thank you for that.
Absolutely. We're, we're excited to be forward on this.
Any questions or on this? All right, can I get a motion please?
Uh, motion to approve the professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And to approve the changes negotiated by legal counsel.
What's that?
Go please.
Yes, yes.
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 Right, agenda item F, consider approval of resolution, resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen, a resolution to rescind restrictions on open burning in the city of Purple Creek. Chief O'Connor.
As well as the spouse to, to, I lost video. My name is Joe Carr. I'm your fire chief. Um, Mayor Council. Fire bans are going to be a regular factor within Colorado. The, the climate, as it changes, as the weather patterns change, fire restrictions aren't necessarily evil. Inevitably, as soon as we get one approved, we get a beautiful series of rainy days and the conditions get much better. That's where we finders. So my recommendation is we rescind the state one fire ban. And we continue to look at it going forward. We're going to continue to monitor the conditions. And as necessary, that may be back if you, if necessary.
Does uh, you can do this too, Chief?
Uh, running off cycle with when the county meets, which has posed a little bit of a challenge.
We'll head, talk, we're gonna visit with Aaron.
Yeah, we, we just, we posed the question to Aaron regarding is there an administrative methodology that we can utilize to set these to then notify councils to be done? And then when necessary to again rescind it administratively versus legislative. So I think that is permissible under the current city statutes. Um, but again, we've reached out to Aaron. I don't want to assume that that is the case. So. We'll hopefully with a, you have your comment.
I don't.
I said it just like I mentioned, obligation. So, um, but I feel we find a better way. I think we, there's value in being in sync with the county. I, I don't necessarily want to chose that, but there are also things that relate exclusively to the city that pose different risks because of our urban environment, because of our historical use of commercial fireworks. There are other things that come into play beyond what the county worries about. So I do think there's value in us having our own process.
Doesn't, you don't have the county process? Do they go through the commissioners or?
County goes through the commissioners every time. They seem to do um almost on demand meetings to enter into it and to rescind it. Um, I don't know that to be a fact, but it seems very, very timely. They talk about it one day and it seems to be approved the next.
Do you know who, who recommends to the county?
Fire chops for which I'm actually the chairman out there, fire chief counsel. We talk about the county, the sheriff obviously is in role and unincorporated Teller County by the, by this um state charter. So there are a lot of factors that go into it. Console with the forest, we can, we talk about the federal lands. I mean, there's a lot of different players within Teller County that go beyond single residential structures. So we try to look at the big picture. I think we've been pretty good at it. And we're not, we're just not as flexible as we could.
Well, I certainly trust the administrative process. I, I mean, if we don't need council to vote on it, then.
I mean, we know in three or four days it could be dry.
Like you said, especially from the year of June, July, and everything's first trying to, yeah, we can't wait. Um, ten days to.
So we'll see if it needs, we talked about city administrator and chief agreeing and but we'll see where she wants us to go, you know, with it.
Just as mad of you posting it.
Correct. We need to make sure that you, you are on the file and we publish it somehow within the city so that we have a filing now that we have when we do it. Just because the county was submitted so quickly that we, you know, we've not been posted. So but uh, we do want to ensure it to be back. We would give, make that a little more robust if we did.
I look forward to what Aaron has to say on that.
No, we need to rescind.
Uh, yes, can I happily make my show now? Because I very regret to me went with it last time. Uh, make a motion that we, what is it?
Yeah, resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen of res of the resolution to rescind restrictions on open burning in the city of.
I'll say. Go please.
So, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Right, agenda item G, yes. First reading, consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six, an ordinance of the city of Purple Creek Council. City Council regulating the possession of firearms in Purple Creek city buildings and media locations.
The legislature decided in this last legislative session that they were going to pass a bill that uh made it illegal for anyone to carry in any public building. So they did leave an opt out and the city council of cities or counties have to adopt an ordinance opting out of that legislation. So uh, I've been monitoring other cities, but small cities are doing around Colorado, nearly all of them. That's where this ordinance comes from. Comes from ordinances that other cities have adopted that uh, opts out, uh, people being able to carry concealed in city buildings. The county opted out also. So it's on your agenda for your consideration.
Yeah, right.
Well, considering the prevalence of concealed carry permits in our community, I believe since then opt out, um, I do want to stress the point that in order to conceal carry, you must still have a permit to legally conceal carry. Um, but yeah, I don't have, do you, I'm just that curious. You know how many communities so far that are under channel?
No, I don't. There's a lot of them on ours. It's a C M L website or it's a communications between cities, city administrators. Is where I've been seeing it. So I'm part of that. I see ordinances and things that they're sharing.
So I'm just concerned are curious if you do have a concealed carry permit. I'm assuming you've got to have a permit on file. So if I also ask you, say, okay, that's really, yes.
And Aaron's not here. We, I didn't send it to Alicia, but it was his first reading. So we still have to publish, still have the whole second reading. So if anything needs to be amended that Aaron thinks needs to be changed, we have time to get that in before y'all pull the public hearing and vote on it. And that takes, it will be second meeting in September because we still have to publish.
Any questions, discussion? Right, can I get a motion please?
Uh, motion may approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero six. Oh, second.
Go please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, um, and I apologize. I don't have the, the amended agenda. Somebody have the amended. Okay, well, agenda item eight. Consider approval for a memorandum of understanding between the city and Purple Creek Public Schools to receive grant funds, funds from the Environmental Protection Agency, Community Change Grants to use towards the updating of the city's emergency management plan. I do have a question before we proceed since I am an employee of the school district. Do I need to recuse myself from this discussion?
I don't think so.
Cause there's no financial benefit to the school, um.
Yeah.
Not to the school, you can't do that.
You're not getting anything personally either. It's for the school district itself. So Also for just more general specialty projects directed at the city. So as you can see, it's very simple. Uh, it was a nice surprise that the uh school is going after a grant and there's an opportunity to strengthen that application by helping with our, our emergency management plan. And so they can help from that, that process. We haven't talked about that in months since two thousand and six. So it's we're never do, uh, and, and after this last seasonal in March, uh, we've learned a few lessons from that. So this is a great opportunity for us uh to do that upgrade and not have to pay for it.
Was it, was I saying something about they do, you saw it?
So it's the, the grant that they're going after, the one they're going after, the one they're going after is a um, a green energy grant. Um, which makes it stronger application and they're using solar power as a emergency uh, um source. So some sugar lose power in the city, the school is already designated everywhere across as a uh, emergency shelter. And so that would give that school power. Uh, so it'd be battery powered and so on.
So just curious, I was, have they ever pursued a backup generator, you know, or which could they?
We just ran with, we can do an application because it's a main grant.
Oh.
And so we're all, we're in sessions, the city, we're looking at grants for um natural gas, power generators. Uh, so that we can generate our, our system, our utility systems. And then at works, um, and we're also talking to the school to be able to make that more robust backup power system if they choose. But for this specific grant, it would weaken with the application.
And so just a little history for those who were present during the snowstorm. One of the deficits that we identified in the community is that we did not have a designated warning shelter because there was no power at the school. And the school has served as a great evacuation site during wildfires. This was our first experience in the wintertime. And so that will, you know, the facility is obviously our ideal as a warning center. Center um for the obvious reasons. And so that's really kind of where this conversation got started.
Would, would just the solar and batteries be enough? We'll allow it run.
Finally, maybe the battery can, can, but everything's used on power and that's full strength uh for twenty four hours. They've been shutting down parts of the building, um, the rest, they're waiting for that twenty four hour time building. So they totally, they're going to enter the school beyond it, but they can designate, designate with. Absolutely. Yes. So we're using solar as, as well as our power source, but batteries is the backup. We, there are never battery, the cost of extrastromic, yeah, they're crazy. So, so we're kind of stuck with that. So I, uh, the memorandum that I just created, we have an upgrading panel and the one they have seen and they have read. Um, we can, we go footage. Even my, they had a trend weather events, we change at emergency events. Because we want to make sure it's probably a truck or something driving, we need substation, we take out our power. Um, and we need people to get electricity, taking over the schools or the other emergency centers. So we don't want to just restrict it to weather. Um, avalanches on both telewinding and highway sixty seven will be blocked off again for emotions on the ground, things like that. So make sure it's water.
Is that, is it, unless it passes on the ground, you know, or what do we look for?
Uh, by us, we're running out right now. So, you know, giving them a, a, a estimate. You know, it's a large network. Um, top of our, we're just doing the regular um emergency supply. Sure, the cost very much, but now we do have to worry. Also, if you choose a, 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 which is a snow house. Uh, clear roads to guide people to the shelters. Um, and, and a lot of other internal responses and, and areas that we, we need to address. So that's great. So it can be a larger, much larger than just a new plan.
All right, any further questions or discussion? All right, can I get a motion please?
I'm going to go with the, uh, normal, you know, the standard between the city and the publicly public schools to receive the grant funds. The environmental protection, legal change grant to use towards the updating of the city's emergency management program.
Go please.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. So much. Uh, thank you all so much for being here this evening. Just in closing.